Okay, if I can have everybody's attention, please. It is four o'clock and we will call the July 27, 2015 City Commission meeting to order and have a roll call, please.
Mayor Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
All right, thank you. And right now, I would just ask that all of you who are able to please stand and join us in a pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have one item on the awards and proclamation. We'll have the clerk introduce that item.
Item 3.1, proclaim the city of Salina as a community supporting breastfeeding. Brenda Bandy, program director with Kansas Breastfeeding Coalition, will read the proclamation. The Kansas Breastfeeding Coalition will also present the city of Salina with the community supporting breastfeeding award.
Great. Hi, welcome.
Thank you, thank you for having us. It's a very exciting moment for you all. And so with this, I will read the proclamation first and then followed by the award. That's okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So, "To all citizens of the city of Salina greetings. Whereas the people of Salina, Kansas are deserving of good health, and whereas human milk is the preferred and most appropriate source of nutrition for infants, adapting over time to meet the changing needs of the growing infant; and whereas breastfeeding is a proven primary preventative strategy protecting both infants and mothers from a host of chronic and acute diseases and conditions and building a foundation for lifelong health and wellness; and whereas the act of breastfeeding builds a strong emotional connection between the mother and infant, a bond which lasts a lifetime; and whereas breastfeeding provides a safe, reliable, and renewable food source, especially critical during natural disaster and emergency situations; and whereas employers that provide workplace lactation support experience an impressive return on investment, including lower healthcare costs, absenteeism, and turnover rates, and improved morale, job satisfaction, and productivity; and whereas breastfeeding is economical, providing its benefits at little or no cost, and providing a safe, renewable food source, especially critical during natural disasters; whereas all major medical authorities recommend that mothers breastfeed exclusively for six months, and continue breastfeeding for at least the first year of a child's life, yet breastfeeding rates continue to fall short of the nation's healthy people's objectives; and whereas the U.S. Surgeon General has issued the Surgeon General's call to action to support breastfeeding, calling on healthcare providers, employers, insurers, policymakers, researchers, and the community at large to support mothers in reaching their personal breastfeeding goals; and whereas Salina has an active and effective local breastfeeding coalition; whereas Salina has an active local breastfeeding support group; and whereas the hospital in Salina is committed to providing maternity care practices supportive of breastfeeding as evidenced by their participation in the High Five for Mom and Baby Quality Improvement Program; and whereas Salina has 26 public establishments supportive of mothers needing to nurse in public as evidenced by their participation in the Breastfeeding Welcome Here Program; and whereas Salina has 10 employers who have received the Breastfeeding Employee Support Award in recognition of their high level of support of their breastfeeding employees; and whereas Salina has 25 childcare providers who have completed a course in how to support the breastfeeding mother and family; and whereas Salina has built a culture of breastfeeding support through the above activities and has met all established criteria by the Kansas Breastfeeding Coalition to be recognized as a community supporting breastfeeding. Now therefore I, John Blanchard, Mayor of the city of Salina, Kansas, on behalf of the Salina City Commission, do hereby proclaim Salina as a community supporting breastfeeding as designated by the Kansas Breastfeeding Coalition, and encourage all citizens to support breastfeeding families wherever and whenever possible. In witness thereof, I have undue set my hand and affixed the seal in the city of Salina this 27th day of July, 2015."
That's great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before we have, I think we have a little something to do up here, a plaque that you have.
Yes.
But before that, would you like to tell us any of the other events or meetings, commemorations that you have?
Yes, actually, that's where the local coalition, if I could have, we have people here from the community that would like to make that announcement. I'm with the state coalition.
Oh, okay.
To present the award, and then we'll have Emily come up and talk about what your local coalition's doing to celebrate this.
That's great, we'll do it this way, then.
Does that sound okay?
That's great.
All right, fantastic.
Somebody has something to say?
Sure.
Absolutely. So we'll have to come up to the event and then I'm going to present the award. So Mayor Blanchard, we'd like to designate Salina as a community supporting breastfeeding in recognition of the cultural support that your community has built, as evidenced by the people in the community that have been working hard on this designation. You're one of five communities in Kansas that has achieved this designation. So thank you very much for your support, and I encourage everyone in the community to support breastfeeding.
Okay, well, thank you.
So, thank you very much.
This way, this way.
And then I think Emily, she's with the local Saline County Breastfeeding Coalition, will describe the activities that they're doing to support.
All right, thank you.
Hi, I'm Emily Duraco. I'm a representative of the Saline County Breastfeeding Coalition. We are a network of local organizations throughout the community supporting breastfeeding. We have a couple events coming up here. We have One World Breastfeeding Week is the first week in August. We do have a watermelon feed coming up for that, so 6:00 to 7:30 Friday, August 7. We also are going to have an event to recognize all the local businesses and employers who have helped support us and helped create this community of support for our breastfeeding moms, and that event is going to be Thursday, August 22. It's going to be at Blue Sky Brewery. We're going to have appetizers and non-alcoholic drinks, you have to buy your own alcoholic drinks, but it is going to be to support those people who have supported us, so great stuff coming up.
Great.
All right, thank you so much.
I have a question.
Sure.
Are you going to do your proclamation in the morning at the county commission?
Um, I don't.
Think it would be a real good idea.
Sure.
Well, I guess I could address that because we're the Kansas Breastfeeding Coalition that's awarded the designation, and it's on a city level rather than a county level. In order to meet the requirements to be a community supporting breastfeeding, it's measured by your population, and so there is a certain number of businesses that have to participate in these programs based upon the population of your citizens. And so if we were to make a county level award, we would have to throw the net much wider and the bar would be a little higher. So this is a city level recognition for Salina.
Okay.
And so anyway.
Well, it was a good idea.
You know, it's a good idea to expand it to a county level designation, and that's something that can easily be done by recruiting more businesses to participate and welcoming women in their establishments and supporting their employees, and it wouldn't take much more to do that, and I would be happy to come back and award it to the county when they have met that criteria. So, that would be fantastic, a great idea.
Yeah, we'll put that on the list.
Yeah, the coalition is mighty and strong, and I know that they can get it done, so, yes.
Right. Well, we thank all of you for coming here today to share, to present the award and to share the information with us. We appreciate that you're all advocates for healthy babies and young people. I know that there is a big concern and a huge advocacy for early childhood development in the community, and that keeps getting stronger all the time, so I think we're beginning to see the economic and social benefits of healthy young people, babies, from babies on up. And so we thank you for all the work that you do in helping our communities become healthier and stronger in that regard. We'll accept this award on behalf of, of course, the great citizens and businesses who actually made it possible that we be recognized this way. So thank, a big thank you to the businesses who provide that to their employees and made all this possible. I have the signed proclamation for you here, and thank you again for all you do.
Awesome, thanks so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And thank you for bringing the babies in. You know, we get a lot of screaming and crying and childish behavior, but not normally from children.
Babies.
So, it's.
That's on Tuesday.
Junior city manager out there. Well-adjusted junior city manager.
All right, thank you. Okay, well, that's fun. We'll go ahead and move on to Citizens Forum, and this is an opportunity for anyone to come up and speak regarding any item that is not on today's agenda. And we'll just ask that you give your name, your address, limit your comments to five minutes. If you are representing a group or organization, please identify that organization, and we will do our best to hear what you have to say, and we won't take any action, but we will direct staff to get answers if you have questions. So, being said, do we have any public comment at this time? So I went through all that for nothing. Okay, well.
Well said.
Thank you. Would you like, would you please? Oh, we do, look at that. All right, thank you.
My name is Stephen H. Nelson. I live at 714 North Second Street, Salina, Kansas. I'm here on, not on behalf of myself or Kenwood Cove, and I went over a week ago yesterday and went, I took the ride on the tornado, or otherwise they call it the toilet bowl, but anyway, I rode it, and I went round and around, and finally I had, was completely down underneath like eight, 10 feet of water, and they didn't, and so finally, a young life, a young man come along and rescued me, pulled me up out of the water, took me to the first aid office. I turned wise as a sheet, I threw up all over the floor, just because I had, ended up with a concussion on my head. I found the EMS showed up, they came, picked me up, put me on a gurney, put me in the ambulance, held me over to the ER, and so then later they took MRI and a CAT scan, and that was, when I was in there probably four and a half hours, just waiting for tests to get done to see what, how I ended up, and that was it, so. I'd like to just see if we can, or somebody can put up a sign by that, it's on the north side of Kenwood Cove. They can put up a sign that says, "Enter at your own risk or do away with it." McPherson had one with theirs, and they took, did away with it, so. I'm just curious what would happen.
Okay. Well, first of all, we're glad that you're okay.
I am, thanks.
And if we could just maybe see what city manager has to say, is there any, has there been complaints about this particular?
Yeah, I'd have to check, I'm not aware of really any complaints. Like all the features there, those are designed in a particular way. I think that was tomorrow knowledge, designed properly with the proper products and so forth, but, so I can't, without knowing more, I don't know what led to that, but we'll certainly keep our eyes open, and we can, we can check and see if there's been any other concerns or complaints. It's a very popular ride, quite honestly, you hear the kids talk about it all the time, and my problem is, is I can't go feet first, I end up going head first, but you know, that's my problem.
Which I did, Jason, I went, I went down there. My efforts, I just went completely down out of the water, and ended up.
Well, like I said, we're glad that you're okay, and we appreciate you coming up here to share that.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have no public hearings or items scheduled for a certain time, so we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of July 20, 2015. Item 6.2, authorize the mayor to approve change order number three for laboratory support site-wide remedial investigation to Continental Analytical Services Incorporated in the amount of $68,785, and surveying support site-wide remedial investigation to Wilson &amp; Company Incorporated Engineers and Architects in the amount of $1,546.
Okay, great. Are there any items on the consent agenda any commissioner would like to have removed or amended? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second to accept the consent agenda as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, that passes 5-0. Move on to administration.
Item 7.1, second reading ordinance number 15-10787, repealing Salina Code Section 35-104, and amending Salina Code Sections 8-12.4.2, 8-49.1, 14-49.5.1, 31-103.4, and 35-106 pertaining to address numbers and repealing the existing sections.
Okay, ordinance number 15-10787 was passed on first reading on July 20, 2015, and since that time, we have received no public comment in regard to this. So, do we have any public comment on this item at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back for action.
I move that we approve on second reading ordinance number 15-10787.
Second. A motion in a second to approve on second reading ordinance number 15-10787. Is there any further discussion on this item? And I see none. We'll get a roll call, please.
Commissioner Crawford.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Blanchard.
Aye, that passes 5-0.
Item 7.2, approve supplemental agreement number two for consulting services relating to the former Schilling Air Force Base site.
Okay, staff report from Ms. Tasker, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'll try to hit the highlights of this. I feel like you've seen some of this information many, many times in the past, but just enough to at least give you an idea of what this project pertains to. The city of Salina, the Salina Airport Authority, USD 305, and Kansas State at Salina are referred to as the public entities, and I'm only defining those because I'm going to use their title later in my discussion. And they've been tasked with to ensure that the groundwater contamination at the Salina Air Force Base is characterized and removed. For the last two years, the Dragon Corporation has been completing a remedial investigation at the airbase, and the scope of that work is defined in the consent decree with the United States of America and in the consent agreement in final order with KDHE. And in general, previous investigations of the groundwater quality at the former Schilling Air Force Base did not focus on groundwater and bedrock. And the recent investigations in 2014 that the Dragon Corporation did identified that the bedrock groundwater in some areas had much higher concentrations in much larger areas and much deeper than any of the historical data from the previous years had identified. The Dragon Corporation prepared a supplemental remedial investigation work plan for the bedrock groundwater in operable unit one and operable unit two, basically focusing on investigating the bedrock groundwater in Plume A, and that area is in general west of the Salina Area Technical College, and in Plume G, which is to the north of Geoprobe on Wall Street. And basically, the recent data indicates that the bedrock groundwater is significantly higher than what we would allow for drinking water, which is five parts per billion. Some of the data shows anywhere from two to 16 times higher than what the original information showed. So, in, what needs to be done is we need to delineate exactly what that quantity of contamination is and in the area that it is in, so that we can define a plan to correct that in the future. This supplemental remedial investigation work plan was approved by KDHE in May of 2015. The consent decree with the United States of America allows the public entities an option to ask for additional work by a written modification. And the first step for that, we have completed, we've sent that written modification to the U.S. Army in May of, May 26, 2015. The second step was for them to let us know that they were not willing to pay for any or all portion of that, and to date, we've not heard from them. So, in this case, no answer means yes. That's a little difficult for me to get used to, I'm used to hearing something back, but to date, we have not heard anything back from them, so we're under the assumption that they are going to pay their fair share of this cost, which is 90%, and then the city shares 10%, which would be similar from what we've seen with the previous split. And in your packet, there was a detailed estimate of the total project cost, which is $340,000, and it does include a 15% contingency. Out of that, the Dragon Corporation and their subconsultant share is 164,000, split between Dragon at 118,000 and the subconsultants at 46,000. The remaining 176,000 is for specialty contractors that the city contracts with, separate from Dragon. The original total estimated project cost was $9,363,000, and it's increased 340,000, so the new total project cost is $9,703,000. A 15% project contingency is included in the project, which is $1,222,000. To date, the entities have approved the use of roughly $114,000 of this contingency. The project contingency will be utilized temporarily to fund the $306,000, which is the United States of America's share, or 90%. The project contingency fund will be reimbursed for these additional costs through a process that's outlined in the consent decree, and the public entity's share, 10%, or 34,000, will be funded from the Water and Wastewater Capital Improvement Fund. It's recommended that the city commission authorize the mayor to approve supplemental agreement number two for consulting services relating to the former Schilling Air Force Base site with the Dragon Corporation to amend their contract from $6,574,000 to $6,738,000. Dragon's corporation's share, $4,341,000, and subconsultant's share, $2,397,000, and amend the specialty contractors' costs from $2,037,000 to $2,213,000 for the supplemental remedial investigation for the bedrock groundwater in operable unit one and two. I would be glad to answer any questions you might have about that.
Okay, questions for staff?
Just for informational purposes, what percent of the investigation is now complete?
To date, the actual field work is nearing completion. The majority of that work will be complete by the end of December, and our last evaluate, or pay request, they had roughly utilized 2.6 million. With this work, we would be at about 3 million out of the total of 9.7 million that would be expended to date with the field work. So, the field work is nearly done, but it's roughly not quite one-third of the total dollars.
And so, when would the last piece of the puzzle be completed?
The original contract called for a five-year timeframe, but the Dragon Corporation has been working on a much quicker pace of that, and the hope is to have that completed in three years or roughly by the end of 2017.
Might be of interest to the commission, and Martha has accurately described the reporting and the frankly, lack of response from the federal government, but just so you know, we, at the request of the public entities and through environmental counsel, we've certainly advised them of each step of the way, including this step of how we would be approaching this matter, so that they have notice of every step in anticipation of us ultimately looking to the federal government for their share.
Okay. Operational units one and two, what does that represent as far as the overall? Will there be other operational areas that may have this same issue?
At this point in time, they have not found anything that would indicate that in the bedrock. There is, in your packet, and I realize it's probably fairly small, but it identifies where operational unit number one is.
Is it the south, the very south end?
One is towards the north and east end. For the site impaired, I have a bigger drawing.
Hold it up, I can probably read it from there.
Which would be me. And so basically, it's more to the north and east corner, operable unit one, and operable unit number two is below that.
Okay, I'm confusing operable units and plumes, so we're good, okay.
Yeah, Plume A is towards the north and east corner. Plume G is part of OU2 in the south and east corner.
Okay. Okay, and then, and then just a general question for the paying the 30, roughly 30,000 of this, comes out of, you said the wastewater fund, water and wastewater fund?
Yeah.
And then, how, how, did we fund, I mean, the way the entities, it's a refresher here. Did we fund the entire thing, and then we had the other entities come on as partners? But did we fund the entire first part, the roughly?
The 10%.
Yeah.
We funded that.
We funded that.
The city funded that.
Okay. Okay, so this would fit into the same framework?
Same framework.
As the whole?
With the idea that the other three groups are all a part of the city in general.
Right.
The dollars are going to come from the same group of individuals, whether it's the city or all four entities, so.
Right.
But the city funded the original dollars.
Okay. But on this one, coming out of the water and wastewater funds, there, that's, that's unique to how the other one was funded. We funded the other one differently?
No, it's the same.
Did it come out of the same fund?
Very same.
Okay, all right.
Identical source.
Okay.
Yeah, we looked at it, Commissioners, the biggest impact of this in the very beginning has been a threat to the public water supply, so that's why it made sense when we looked at our matching of the federal dollars to match from that source. The early, early piece, as we let up before we, before we came to the dollars being brought to us from the Department of Justice, was a shared amount, as we looked at all the legal costs and so forth, but at this point forward, I think we believe, and the Commissioners believe that, yeah, the source for this project, and we'll have to see as well as we get to the point of actual remediation later, would be from that, from that public water account because of the impact to the public water supply.
Okay.
So it makes sense for us to, in essence, carry that for everyone, because different people were brought in for various little reasons that didn't really make a lot of sense, and we looked at this as a community pot.
Right. Okay. And just on the off chance that the federal government, someone says, "Hey, what's this?" Not likely to happen, but there's no problem with that being, we're not going to be faced with, okay, you can't use a contingency fund for that, it has to come out of a separate area. Should, should they come back and say, "We're not going to pay the 90% of that. If we have to pay the 100%, can it come out of the contingency of that, or is it viewed as a completely different project and we have to?"
Yeah, those are good questions, I think, and I don't want to speak for Greg, he might be able to elaborate more than me, but the conclusion of our ability to move forward because the federal government failed to respond within the 30-day formal time period in which they're supposed to respond is not really a practical, "Well, we think we're pretty good, let's move forward." It's more based on a legal analysis of how the process is supposed to work absent their response.
Okay.
So we would not expect necessarily any form of a denial or vehement fight or anything like that. Now, you never know, it's federal government, so we'll see what the response might be in the future, but that's based on the way the process is supposed to work.
All right. Thank you. Any public comment on this item? And seeing none, we'll bring it back for action.
Mayor, I move approval of supplemental agreement number two. Mayor, I move approval of Supplemental Agreement Number Two for Consulting Services related to the former Schilling Air Force Base site. Because I should probably put in more details here. Authorize the mayor to approve the Supplemental Agreement for Consulting Services relating to the former Schilling Air Force Base site with the Dragon Corporation be amended from $6,574,000 to $6,738,000, and amend specialty contractors' costs from $2,377,000 to $2,213,000 for the supplemental remedial investigation, bedrock, groundwater, and operating units one and two.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the Supplemental Agreement Number Two for Consulting Services related to the former Schilling Air Force Base site with Dragon Corporation. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five, zero. Don't go too far.
Item 7.3, approved change order number one for drilling and aquifer testing support site-wide remedial investigation, and change orders number four for drilling support site-wide remedial investigation.
Thank you, mayor and commissioners. Normally, you see these as change order items, but couldn't run that drill today since we needed to approve the supplemental agreement first. So, I don't intend to go into a lot of detail, just hit the highlights, and then let you ask questions if you have additional questions. The Dragon Corporation received change proposal requests from three drilling contractors for this drilling work for the groundwater in the bedrock. And these proposals were based on unit prices from previous projects and change orders for this project. GSI Engineering LLC, the total cost for their work is $30,300. Environmental Priority Services Incorporated is $10,650. GeoCore Incorporated is $62,683. In general, GSI will do the aquifer test in the bedrock. Environmental Priority Services Incorporated will do the work in the top 25 feet of the surface in that area, and GeoCore will do work in the 30-to-100-foot depth into the The budget allocation of $340,000 was just previously improved for the bedrock groundwater. The estimated cost for the drilling support is $158,000. The total for the three drillers is $103,633. It's recommended that the City Commission authorize the mayor to approve the change orders identified below. Drilling and aquifer testing for the site-wide remedial investigation to GSI Engineering LLC out of Wichita, Kansas. Change order number one, in the amount of $30,300, revises their total agreement to Drilling support for the site-wide remedial investigation to Environmental Priority Services Incorporated, Salina, Kansas. This would be change order number four, in the amount of $10,650, revised agreement amount of $175,947. Drilling support for the site-wide remedial investigation to GeoCore Incorporated of Salina, Kansas. Change order number four, in the amount of $62,683. Their revised agreement amount would be $178,040. I'd be glad to answer any questions for you, since I kinda hit the surface for you there.
Okay, great. Questions for staff?
Just want, the, the big difference between what's being requested now and the original amounts is just because of the sheer increase in size of the contamination?
This portion of the work is for the bedrock groundwater contamination work, the additional supplemental agreement number two, and that work was never conceived or thought about in the original scope of work, so it's additional work. Okay?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Do we have public comment on this item? I see no public comment. I will ask staff. We're looking for three individual motions here.
I think that would be passed.
Yes, mayor, I think we are looking for three motions.
Looking for a change order with GSI, looking for a change order with Environmental Priority Services, looking for a change order with GeoCore.
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve change order number one for drilling and aquifer testing support, site-wide remedial investigation to GSI Engineering. Change order number one, in the amount of $30,300, revised agreement amount, $72,900.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second to approve change order number one with, for drilling and aquifer testing support, site-wide remedial investigation to GSI Engineering LLC, the amount of $30,300 with a revised agreement amount of $72,900. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five, zero.
Mr. Mayor, I'd further move that we approve, under item 7.3, the drilling support site-wide remedial investigation to Environmental Priority Services, Inc. Change order number four, in the amount of $10,650,000, revised from $175,947.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second to approve change order for the drilling support site-wide remedial investigation to Environmental Priority Services, Inc. Change order number four, in the amount of $10,650, the revised agreement amount of Further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five, zero.
Mr. Mayor, again, under 7.3, I would move we approve drilling support, the site-wide remedial investigation to GeoCore. Change order number four, in the amount of $62,683, $683, revised agreement amount,
Second.
Okay. So, again, we have a motion and a second in regard to item 7.3 regarding drilling support site-wide remedial investigation to GeoCore Incorporated, changing, change order number four, in the amount of $62,683 with a revised agreement amount of $178,040. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five, zero. Thank you.
Item 7.4, first reading ordinance number one, 5-10788, unconditionally approving the issuance of taxable general obligation bonds by the Salina Airport Authority for the purpose of financing the cost of certain capital improvements located at the Salina Airport and Industrial Center, and refunding certain outstanding general obligation bonds of the authority.
Mr. Beckson.
Thank you, mayor and commissioners. The Salina Airport Authority was established in 1965 through enabling legislation adopted by the Kansas Legislature shortly before that time. And in setting up that relationship between the city and the airport authority, the airport authority was given the authority to issue its own bonds, backed by the full faith and credit of the airport authority, not the full faith and credit of the city. But the relationship is one in which, if the airport authority wishes to issue bonds, they adopt a resolution expressing that intent. That resolution then comes to the City Commission for consideration. When that comes to you, you have three choices. One is to deny the request. One is to unconditionally approve the issuance of the bonds. And thirdly is to approve the issuance of the bonds, but publish notice that would set up the potential for a referendum in the event a petition requesting a referendum is filed. So, the ordinance before you and the request before you is that you unconditionally approve the proposed issuance of those bonds. As you may have noted, there are two elements here. One is $675,000 in proposed capital improvement projects at both the Salina Regional Airport and the Industrial Center. The second component has to do with some economies that can result from a refunding of some Series 2005 and Series 2007 bonds based on presently favorable interest rates. So, that's the question before you, and if you have further questions or about the purposes being served by the proposed bonds, Salina Airport Authority Executive Director Tim Rogers is here, and I'm sure would be happy to answer those.
Do we have questions of either, well, staff at this point, and if not, if Mr. Rogers would like to say anything, or if anybody has any questions of him, we can let that be known? No, if there, if you have something you'd like to say, you're certainly welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and commissioners, and just wanna again, just briefly highlight the purposes of the bond issued and the process that the Airport Authority Board of Directors does go through. At this time of the year, July and August is, the Airport Authority is also in a budget preparation timeframe and mode, but we are focusing at this point in time, the capital budget and the, of the Airport Authority, our operating budget is approved at this, by December of this year. So, a little different cycle than the, than the city, than you're going through at the present time. We also have a mill levy that is utilized by the Airport Authority to repay outstanding geo-bond debt. So, at this time of the year, we are looking at ways we, how to keep our mill, our mill levy stable, or to start to lower it, as we've committed in recent years to do so. We're also looking at the capital expenditures and needs for the Salina Regional Airport and the Airport Industrial Center, the property there owned by the Airport Authority. So, we go through the process of assessing our capital cost, and the Airport Authority Board, though, first started looking at our outstanding debt. The Airport Authority utilizes the same, the services of the same financial advisor as the city of Salina, George K. Baum. And at this time of the year, George K. Baum looks at outstanding debt, and we look for opportunities to refund outstanding bond issues, the principal amount that's outstanding. Those opportunities for refunding are looked at in order to save dollars and restructure in order to level out or, or look at the, at the longer debt remaining. And that occurs when bonds are eligible for, for a call, for an early call. And we found at this point in time, due to a drop in interest rates since the time that the two bond issues that are looked at in this, in this resolution and this ordinance, it is time to call those bonds, reissue the outstanding debt at a savings of about $120,000 over the lot, the remaining life of that bond issue. So, we look at those savings that can be then applied to using less mill levy dollars to repay those bonds. The Airport Authority also looked at the current capital needs and capital project needs for the, for the organization, and we identified two projects related to the Salina Regional Airport. First, a year ago, coming up on a year ago, we responded very quickly in 28 days to make, open up and make improvements to hangar 959, the big jumbo hangar at the north end of the airport industrial, the industrial center and the regional airport, to open that facility for Bombardier Aerospace. We executed a lease agreement on September 2nd of 2014, and the hangar was occupied by Bombardier by September 28th. And we expended in cash some $323,000 of cash funds to get that building ready, in addition to a KDOT grant that we used. The Airport Authority, by using a portion of this bond issue, $325,000 to replenish cash. We, in essence, did temporary notes with cash, and we can refund that through this bond issue. The second capital improvement that's been identified are improvements to the MJ Kennedy Air Terminal, so we can better, be in a better position as a community to be ready and be prepared for potential improvements in scheduled air service. So, we would be designing this summer, rest of the summer, be prepared to late summer, early fall, possibly kick off some improvements to the building and the passenger holding area, passenger restrooms, and also do some improvements and, on the exterior of the building to improve the appearance of the MJ Kennedy Air Terminal, so we can better fulfill a common goal of the city, you know, the Airport Authority, the county, and the Salina Air Chamber, and kinda generally the businesses that, within our community and our residents for business and leisure travel, to see if we can attract and make improvements to our scheduled air service. With this bond issue, we have looked at mill levy for the next two years. The cri, the Airport Authority's current mill levy is 4.486 mils. The projected mill levy that would be considered by the Airport Authority at its August board meeting coming up, we'd be looking at 4.396, which would be a reduction, and we look further ahead in 2016, another reduction of 4.388. So, we've looked two years ahead at our budget, and our continued success in leasing available building and available, available hangars will allow us to improve on that as we finish leasing some properties in the next 24 months. So, with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that the commissioners may have, and thank you for listening to that additional summary.
Okay. Thank you. Sounds like good things are happening out there, and I know that was nice to be able to leverage the KDOT funds with, with the?
With Bombardier, yes. It certainly was.
Advantageous, and appreciate the work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead. Commissioner Hardy has a question, in fact.
The work that you're big, going to be doing at the terminal, there's really nothing that has been done to speak of since it was first built. Is that probably correct?
Uh, no, there've been other remodeling projects. The last remodeling project on the interior of the building was probably, it's coming on 10 years. And so, that was a new carpet, opening up the lobby area bit, and some general improvements. But it's been 10 years since we've really addressed the, the interior of the building or any, any space improvements.
Would the renovation that you're describing be sufficient for the foreseeable future, the next 10, 15 years?
Uh, I'd probably, no, not for 10. It's probably, would be good for three to five, depending upon the level of, of air service improvements that the community can recruit. So, it would be an initial step, and probably then we'd be looking at some additional improvements. But it's hard to project exactly what additional more we would need.
Would the improvements then be complementary to what might happen down the road?
Yes, they will be.
Is this step one?
That's correct. Phase one, phase two, out to maybe, hopefully, phase three.
So, you're saying no moving walkways right now?
No, I think we're safe. There is a long walkway, but I still don't think we're gonna automate that walkway very quickly.
Well, it's not that far, so.
No, it's not.
All right. Great. Any further questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have public comment on this item? And I see no public comment. Do we bring it back for action?
I move that we adopt ordinance number one, 5-10788, unconditionally approving the issuance of, number one, the authority's general obligation bonds in a principal amount not to exceed $675,000, excluding cost of issuance and temporary financial, financing costs to pay the cost of the project, and number two, the authority's general obligation refunding bonds in a principal amount sufficient to refund all or a portion of the refunded bonds.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 15-10788, unconditionally approving the issuance of, one, the authority's general obligation bonds in a principal amount not to exceed $675,000, excluding cost of issuance and temporary financing costs to pay the cost of the project, and two, the authority's general obligation refunding bonds in a principal amount sufficient to refund all of, or a portion of the refunded bonds. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five, zero. And we have no development business today. Do we have any other business?
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, I move to recess into executive session for thirty minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege, for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters, and to discuss matters pertaining to the acquisition of a real estate, of real estate, for the reason that public discussion of the matter would adversely affect the city's position in relation to acquisition of the real estate, and reconvene at five forty P.M.
Five, five twenty?
Five twenty, thank you.
I think you probably, I was Freudian slip, I think you're thinking five forty.
I was just going with the, with the odds.
Thirty minutes, okay. Boy, we have some optimism around here today. Okay, so I have a motion and a second to recess into executive session for thirty minutes for purposes of realis, attorney, is it attorney-client privilege? Okay.
And real estate, yes.
And real estate acquisition purposes. And reconvene at five twenty. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five, zero. We're in executive session. Do we expect to have any business when we return?
No, we do not.
No business. Thank you.